Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. And welcome to all of you, some regular faces and some newcomers, or at least not as regular faces. So, welcome to all of you tonight. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for our call person.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Durham Becker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified of the United States of America and two of the four states stands: One Nation, Under God, In The Civil with Liberty and Justice For All.
Thank you. Next, adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Going to move right ahead to our first of two proclamations this evening. This one is designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month. So, I am going to come down to the dais, and if our guests would like to come join me at the podium, I should say.
Yes, with permission.
Welcome.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Zachariah.
Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, one in four individuals will experience mental health issues in their lifetimes, which can affect parents, sisters, brothers, spouses, coworkers, and others in our lives. And whereas, it is essential to eliminate disparities in mental health by promoting well-being for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, language, place of residence, or age, and ensure equity of access, delivery of service, and improvement of outcomes. Whereas, the Mental Health Division seeks to reduce barriers to access, improve community outreach, and engage in engagement that assures culturally and linguistically competent care to diverse communities through culturally competent services and policies. Whereas, while there is still much work to be done to eliminate disparities in services and increase education about mental illness, Napa County service providers are to be commended for their collaborative approach when working with individuals in need. And whereas, a holistic approach to services, which includes prevention and early intervention, is an effective way to meet the needs of individuals at risk of developing mental health issues, individuals who are experiencing early onset of the symptoms of mental illness, or individuals with serious mental illness or severe emotional disturbance. And whereas, there is a strong body of research documenting that with support and treatment, between seventy and ninety percent of individuals with mental illness have a significant reduction in symptoms and improved quality of life. Whereas, every Napa County resident can be an ally by learning about and dispelling the myths related to mental illness, and eliminating stigma by treating individuals with mental illness with respect. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Month in the town of Yountville. As the mayor of the town of Yountville, I also call upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the town of Yountville, to recommit ourselves and our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, to supporting our community members so that they can take action to protect their mental health, and to promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you again for being here.
Yeah. I'm going to share a little bit about me.
Alright.
Who I am and how I became to the county and stuff. My name is Zachariah Guyer. I'm one of the first two community aides hired within the Adult Full Service Partnership, which is essentially adult mental health at the county. So, that was a little over three years ago. And we do a lot of outreach and engagement. And last year, I actually accepted at the Board of Supes for Napa County. So, that was really cool. But, you know, I figure, you know, me being out here and just telling my story and a little bit about me, maybe, you know, helps one or two people get, you know, through the day of their life. So, I'm born in Napa, actually up in Angwin at Deer Park, so nineteen eighty-five, and then grew up pretty good, you know. Twelve years old, actually eleven and a half, I had a stroke. So, that was kind of, you know, a major big issue. But, I kind of overcame that and strived and graduated high school. And then I went off to college, and, you know, college first romances, you know, kind of, they hurt. So, I had to come back home and reevaluate my situation, moved out again for the second time in my life. And then, I was like twenty-one coming home, and out in Canera, so I was in a head-on accident coma, you know, was off and on, touch and go for a month. So, I had to relearn how to walk for the third time in my life. And then, you know, I moved out again, you know, after getting some support from my parents and my community, and getting, you know, sound in my mental stability, because it was like, you know, this whole, well, why didn't I die? Why, you know, like, all that type of stuff. So, I moved back out to Santa Rosa, continued my studies, broke up with my girlfriend, and it was a pretty major breakup. So, I ended up seeking out Napa County services. Before, in previous situations, my family had always, we, you know, saw a private talk therapist and a private pill doctor. So, we were like, you know, let's try the public avenue. So, we did that. And through doing that, you know, people at the county kept telling me, oh, you need to apply for this job, or, oh, you need to do this. And I was like, I don't know, you know, I'm just coming here. So, then I finally applied for one. And, like, I applied for it, I think it was like October or something. And then I heard, like, the week before Christmas, I got this phone call from my now supervisor saying, hey, can you come in for an interview on Thursday? And I was like, I guess, you know, I thought I was out of the running. And she was on the little panel, and that was Thursday. And then she calls me Friday, I missed the call. And this is like, literally, like, the twenty-third of December. So, I was out, like, shopping at the outlets, you know, before Christmas, you know. And I called her at four-thirty, and she finally picks up the phone. And I was like, hey, what's up? This is Zachariah. Hey, you got the job? And I was like, whoa. So, it was like a tilt, you know, really a big, like, just like. And ever since then, you know, we've been doing, like, community fairs, like I said. We do one-on-one, kind of like, case management, helping individuals access stuff. I did a tour of the vet's home three months ago with a guy. And, you know, he's contemplating living there. So, it's really cool, and I just enjoy it, and it's what I am. So, thank you for giving me a little bit of time and for me to share my story with you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. And just so you're aware, that your story is being heard by people at home that are watching us on TV, and it'll be online, and so your message will get out further and further. So, thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here to support him as well. Next up, we do have a proclamation recognizing some of our own. We are going to be declaring May sixteenth through the twenty-first of two thousand and sixteen as National Public Works Week. So, if I could be joined by our Public Works team members that are here tonight, up at the podium, I would appreciate it. And if they have any support personnel with them, they'd like to come up also.
Future personnel, please.
This is a proclamation declaring May sixteenth to the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support for an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs, such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works staff. Whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as National Public Works Week in the town of Yountville. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Again, thank you all very much. Somebody gets to. I know you love the spotlight, all of you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, Council. It truly is an honor to be part of the Public Works team in Yountville. This is a fantastic place to work. And I think I speak for, well, I am speaking for the whole entire Public Works team, that they feel the same way, that we have the great support from the council. And, like I said, it's an honor and a privilege to do what we do for the town of Yountville. Terry Moylan has had that pleasure for nearly twenty-eight years. We asked him to come tonight and join us and be recognized for that service. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
It's a pleasure.
Thanks. It seems only fair that we acknowledge Joe Tagliabashi, who heads up our entire Public Works Department. So, thank you. And to all the staff that are not here tonight, please pass along. And Terry, great appreciation for almost three decades of your dedicated service to making Yountville beautiful, and work properly, and be green, and everything that you do to contribute. So, thank you very much.
And Mayor and Council, if I may, I think it's also a great credit to the foundation and the work of our Public Works crews with the acknowledgement that Expedia Travel Magazine, when they named Yountville number five in the most beautiful small town. So, I think a lot of work and credit goes to our team.
That's right. Alright, we're going to move right ahead to public comment. So, this would be an opportunity for, yes, and we appreciate very much for you coming tonight. Thank you. We were just added to the historic, National Historic Registry for this facility as the original grammar school also.
Cool. Awesome. It's nice. I know, I'm so glad the bell's still there.
Yes.
It's also nice you guys had your meeting when people pick up.
Thank you.
About three o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That was a little bit of our public comment right there.
There you go.
Is there any other item that a member of the public would like to bring before the council? Not even the two young ladies in the front? No? Okay. We're going to move on ahead to our consent calendar. We have five items for consideration. Is there any discussion or action?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There goes our public. We just have some.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tom.
Bye, Marlowe.
So, we're going to move right ahead. We have no presentations or public hearings, so we're going to jump to item ten A for consideration adopting a resolution approving budget adjustments as listed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this evening we have before you a resolution to approve a budget adjustment for the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. This budget adjustment is a request to help us with the engineering, the design, for the replacement of the water line on the Yountville Cross Road planned reconstruction for the fall of this year. As you know, based on our CIP, our Capital Improvement Presentation that we had earlier this month, actually now April, this project is on a pretty tight schedule. And so, to maintain that schedule, we would like to request this funding allocation to help us proceed and make sure that the project stays on line, time, on the timeline. We're asking to adopt the budget adjustment, increasing appropriations from the Water Utility Capital Improvements Fund for twenty-seven thousand dollars to help us with the design of the water facilities on the Yountville Cross Road Reconstruction Project.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Questions at the staff report?
No.
Any questions from the audience? Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number sixteen dash three-three-three-seven, approving Budget Adjustment Number twenty-sixteen dash sixteen dash O-two, increasing appropriations from the Water Utility Capital Improvements Fund, sixty balance, to add twenty-seven thousand to ST thirty-sixteen, for the design of water facilities on the Yountville Cross Road Reconstruction Project, ST dash zero-zero-one-five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up, consideration of adopting a resolution extending drought conditions, because it doesn't rain much.
Please. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have before you a resolution that will extend the current water emergency regulations that were approved last year at this time. On March first, just to give you a little background, March first, two thousand and fourteen, Governor Brown signed a drought relief package. At that time, the council implemented Phase One restrictions here in town. That gave, that gave the state government and our own local government the ability to do a little bit more in the efforts to conserve water. Due to the continued dry conditions, on January twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, the State Water Board issued a notice that there was going, that drought conditions weren't going to continue, and in fact, had gotten worse. On April twenty-fifth of last year, two thousand and fifteen, the governor issued the proclamation for the continued state of emergency. It would give us, give the state and the public, local public agencies, the ability to manage the water in drought conditions. They also ordered that the provisions of the two thousand and fourteen proclamation remain in full force. In addition, they added several new provisions. February two thousand and sixteen, the State Water Resources Control Board came back and extended the governor's executive order into October two thousand and sixteen, as allowed by law. As you know, California's been undergoing several years of drought. Actually, we're currently in the fourth year of drought. Twenty-twelve was categorized as below normal. Thirteen-year, twenty thirteen was the driest year on record. Two thousand and fourteen was the third driest year in nineteen, one hundred and nineteen years of record water keeping. And though, two thousand and fifteen was supposed to be an El Nino year, it was really only average at best. While there have been many improvements in storage capacity in many of the key reservoirs, a number in the state remained below the normal capacity. And I think it's important to note that the groundwater has been drawn down due to the drought and not really recharged. As of February second, two thousand and sixteen, the state has reduced water use by twenty-five percent, over twenty-five percent, as compared to the two thousand and thirteen benchmark years. Water levels are a bit below normal, and again, the groundwater basins throughout the state are also down. To date, our town has reduced consumption by twenty-point-one percent compared to the twenty-point, two thousand and thirteen benchmark. It was a little bit higher at the time this report was written, but when we got the numbers back this month, it's clear that when we hit drier weather, our water usage goes up, as you would expect. We still expect to end the year well above the twenty percent average, but we're coming into the drier part of the year. So, we expect those numbers to kind of come back towards a twenty percent number for the summer, and then gain a few points as we head back into the winter. The emergency regulations were adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board and signed by the governor, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. They were grouped into three categories. Prohibitions that include everyone. So, the ones that, the prohibitions that included everyone are utilize potable water. You're not allowed to use potable water to wash sidewalks and driveways. No runoff was allowed when irrigating with potable water. The only time you could use a hose to wash a car was with the shut-off nozzle. No decorative water and water features that did not recirculate water, and no outdoor irrigation during and forty-eight hours following measurable precipitation. Restaurants can only serve water to customers on request, and hotels and motels must provide guests with an option to not have towels and laundry laundered daily. The last group were the water suppliers and agencies and what is required of them. So, for us, it was to impose restrictions on outdoor irrigation, which meant twice-a-week irrigation. Water periods were only, you're only allowed to water between the hours of, before ten AM or after six PM, so not during the hottest part of the day. We're required to notify customers about leaks that are within their control. We do an annual report on our water use, and we report on compliance and enforcement. Our municipal code allows us to address water conservation and shortage emergencies, specifically Municipal Code thirteen-point-two-oh to thirteen-point-two-four, and establishes criteria for establishing water conservation. While technically, we're still in a Phase One condition, based on our municipal code, it is a Phase One with a few enhancements. The enhancements are as follows. So, in addition to the, to the previous prohibitions, we now have to actually report to the state on an annual basis. We're asking people to, if they drain their pool, they're not allowed to use potable water. The restrictions remain between ten AM and six PM of no watering, forty-eight hours after a measurable rain, no irrigation. God bless you.
Thank you.
All customers were encouraged to limit expansion or installation of new water using appliances, plumbing or improvements, pools, sprinkler, irrigation systems, larger washing machines, or garbage disposal units. All were recommended to use the most water efficient available. Again, wash-only cars or other vehicles with hard surfaces from buckets and a quick rinse from a hose equipped with a shut-off nozzle. Insulation of any required landscaping can be deferred with the appropriate deferral agreement. An increased emphasis on fire protection, and some, some water conservation measures that we put on a couple of workshops for people here in town to talk about conservation. In addition, all people in town who were wasting water would be notified that the town is, wasting water is prohibited, and gives us sufficient reason for the town to discontinue service if that customer continued wasting water. We are responsible for overseeing implementation of these restrictions and mandates. In addition, the state has developed and continues to fund rebate programs to help with the water conservation measures. Since the early nineteen-eighties, California's building codes have required the manufacture and use of many water-saving devices, such as ultra-low flush toilets, low-flow showerheads, faucets, and commercial dishwasher sprayers, et cetera. Obtaining additional water conservation within homes has become more difficult, so incentives and rebate programs have been implemented. We currently participate in several of the programs. We offer some washer rebates, fifty percent towards the purchase of a water-efficient washer, and two hundred dollars towards the purchase of most efficient washers, the Energy Star rated. This is currently an ongoing program. Cash for Grass is currently ongoing. The state does have some rebates available for smart irrigation controllers, and they continue to expand and fund the program, as I said before. They will continue to provide these and improve these programs with more resources available to help encourage adoption of water-saving measures and devices. That concludes my report for this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
One question I have before I ask the other council. In the resolution, we list the date of October thirty-first as our extension. Is there anything magical about that, or is that an estimated end of?
Yeah, that's what the governor's allowed to do without something from the legislature. So, it's two hundred and seventy days initially, and then he's allowed to extend it into the end of October. So, that's what they've done.
So, you're proposing this new plan extends through October?
Correct. We match what the governor's asked us to follow.
Right. Okay. Any other questions from council?
Well.
Hold on a second.
I wanted to ask and be assured that we will continue the incentive programs like the Cash for Grass, in addition to the prohibitions. Yes?
Yes.
I would assume that those would continue, yes, ma'am?
A couple things, if I may. Joe was going into great detail the fact that this is a state mandate. I want to make sure everybody knows that we purchase our water from the state. So, it's actually kind of important that we follow the state guidelines. But more importantly is, you know, this was not an exceptional year. This was an average rain year. We're not out of the drought, especially as it relates. So, we're talking now about education. And what I want to stress is that last year, we started with a variety of public education outreach. We'll continue to do that. So, you're going to continue to see messaging, information, our opportunities to manage. Sixty percent in the summer of the residential water use is generally outdoor irrigation. So, we really need to work on this, and it will long-term have a positive impact. But, what I will say is that, as you know, we use a education philosophy. We try to reach people and inform them. So, you're going to see us reach out through op-ed pieces, continue our website information, continue to participate in community events with water, partner with the city of Napa on our water conservation, Cash for Grass, and the various other programs. We also, as you know, have a monitoring program that we're required to do by state law. So, we use an education approach, which will be a door hanger. So, the door hanger is hung so that somebody knows that they may have done something. It could be as simple as we learned that sometimes after a power surge or something, your irrigation controller may reset and go back to the default mechanism. Many people have probably turned their controllers off during the winter, and if they don't necessarily reset the program, they may be surprised that they're on a default program and not matching the two-day-a-week restriction. We often get asked, why two days? Well, the short answer for why two days is that's what the state is telling us to do. And it's also, in our case, with a very lean staff, it's also one of the more appropriate ways for us to be able to manage and enforce and develop a monitoring program. As you may recall, the town is working on the next generation of smart meters. But, the two sides of that will be, we have to have the smart meters in where somebody can track consumption. And then, we also have to have our new rate structure, because what will be required then is that you have to have a penalty provision if a person doesn't match, or, excuse me, doesn't meet their target. So, that's something that, as you know, we're in the throes of beginning our rate study. But, in order to have a mechanism that's defensible, so I just want to piggyback on what the Public Works Director is saying. But, we will continue to see a fair amount of education and outreach. You can look for some reminder message trailers in the neighborhoods. We need to have our residents remember to talk to their gardeners and landscapers and look at the adjustments, because at this point, even though they're forecasting a chance of rain at the end of the week, we really are coming out of the rainy season, and we're pretty much into our solid dry season until the fall.
So, the MyVille app is, that's live now, right?
That is correct.
And that is another way for people, if they see a broken sprinkler or something that's not working correctly, they can photograph it and send it in directly to our team.
Absolutely. Or if they've got a question or a concern. Like I say, on our door hangers, we use an education focus. So, the fact that somebody gets a door hanger, it's not the end of the world. It's just somebody's found something, and maybe their sprinkler was broken, maybe they didn't know. But, we go at least three vits before we end up at a penalty provision.
Okay. Any other questions of the report? Is there action to be had on the request for this resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number sixteen dash three-three-three-eight, Extending Drought Condition Water Emergency Regulations and Approving Water Use Efficiency Plan.
Second.
Second.
I assumed our Go Green representatives were going to make the motion and second that, so well, well... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Staff informational reports. I do see, and I don't know, Julie, if you were gonna say anything about this or for my announcing about the vacancies we have on our boards and commissions. Do you want me just to go ahead and quickly do that? We do have, we are recruiting for openings on the Yountville Arts Commission, the Zoning and Design Review Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Town of Yountville Community Foundation Board of Directors, the Napa County Local Food Advisory Council, Yountville Representative, and the Napa Valley Transportation Authority's Citizen Advisory Committee, Yountville Representative. All this information is available on our town website at townofyountville.com. You're certainly welcome to stop in and ask about any of these positions as well. So, please encourage folks to either continue their, their public service or join in the public service that we've enjoyed so much with our residents. Any other staff informational reports? Yes, I see one.
Just reminding the public that our Parks and Recreation Guide for Summer did come out last Saturday, and we are taking registration. And we also have our First Annual Summer Meet and Greet this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 during the Townwide Yard Sale at the community center. So, people can stop on by and meet instructors, learn more about camps and aquatics and all of our other summer programs.
And can we just all check the timing on the yard sale? Because I know that there was a typo and a date in there.
They vary, well, the yard sales themselves vary. So, the cutoff was Friday to get your address in the Yountville Sun. And then that, all of those addresses and the times of their individual sales will be in the Yountville Sun on Thursday as well as the town website.
Or you can just cruise through town?
Cruise through town, yes.
Okay.
Can I make a comment about Cleanup Day?
Sure, we can do that now.
And the Cleanup Day, I think that may be what the mayor was also referring to. Erroniously, we sent out a notice with the wrong day. We had, I think, we might have had the month right, but the year was wrong too. Anyway, a new notice was sent out, it's a pink card, says correction, and that is for the Cleanup Day on May the 14th. So, you need to have all your stuff out on the street the Friday night before that Saturday for, for all the pickups. And they will be matching, we have mandatory service in town, so every customer who is a customer of Upper Valley Waste Management will get their stuff picked up, and all the instructions are on the card. So, May 14th, but get your stuff out, May 13th.
Very good. So, any other staff informational? No? Go on to meeting reports, and there is no report yet for Napa County Flood Control. That was postponed to next week. Napa Valley Transportation Authority, there is no report either. I know we at least have a report on the Go Green Workshop, if that's what Councilmember Doran Becker was gonna bring up, and if not, she can bring up something else.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that I have, had attended the Watershed Information and Conservation Council Meeting, at which we learned about a program that the county is offering in terms of monitoring your groundwater in your well. And they have a program where you can contact them, and they will come out and loan you a monitor to check on the level of your well. And also, they have different devices that they will teach you about that you could use if you purchase that would monitor the water level all the time. And it is only really for people on the valley floor, which is where the water level, all, all the water comes down to the valley floor, so that makes sense. And so, the county website has a link to contact them if you are interested. I have brought this to the attention of the Homeowners Association of Oak Circle, and they are considering, because they do have a well as well. So, it's just good to know, even for, you know, a lot of the vineyards now are, not a lot, but a percentage of the vineyards are voluntarily having their wells monitored because it's in everyone's interest. But that was the main thing that came out of that particular meeting. And then, and then we had the Go Green Team, the Go Green Team Workshop on Saturday. Everyone who attended, I think, found it very instructional and enjoyable and sort of fun, and I want to give a big shout out to our Christine O'Rourke, who is our consultant, who has sort of led the effort along with the Go Green Team members, all five of whom were there and participating, as well as our co-chair. And I'll let you finish then.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone in the community who came out. We had just over, I think we counted over 30 residents who got to flag where they lived and got to participate by putting down things they would, are doing, would like to do or could be doing or refuse to do with regards to Go Green-type initiatives in our community. So, it was a lot of fun. We played Jeopardy, we drank wine, unless you were under the age, and that's still questionable, I know the sergeant's here. That said, we had a really nice time, ate cookies and cheese and crackers. It was a, it was a great experience by all. So, thanks, everyone, for coming out. I did want to, if there are no others, I can continue on. As many people in the audience on television will know, I have three small children, and I think it's incredibly important that as we come into this election season, I don't expect everyone to agree with me, but I think that we all can agree that education for our youth, who will ultimately be taking care of all of us, is incredibly important. To that end, Measure H is one that's gonna be on the ballot. And in this community, what is relative and important, I think, for everyone who so strongly supported the Yountville Elementary School, is that on Measure H, there is a facility master plan allocating $3.4 million of improvements to Yountville Elementary School. These are included, improving public safety or the safety items and security measures around the school. There's upgrades for technology and ADA. There's a new kitchen to allow for more freshly-prepared food, not unlike the restaurants we have in this community, and flex space for a parent room. It also includes relocation of the River Middle School to the current Salvador Elementary Site, creating a closer middle school campus, which, should we have more children in this community, and I think we all ultimately would like to see a diverse community, that would be something, that would be something we should support. So, I strongly support it, and I hope that everyone who's out there in TV land and in the audience tonight can also consider supporting Measure H. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of other things I wanted to touch on. I did spend the day last Wednesday at the Capitol in Sacramento as part of Legislative Action Day with the League of California Cities. And for the first time in several years, I've been doing it for quite a while now. First time that we had in every scheduled meeting, the actual legislator was present. Often, it's their chief of staff or another staffer, but we had 100% attendance, so that was a nice surprise.
Election year.
It is an election year. But some, including Senator Lois Wolk, who was there, is termed out and leaving. But, you know, I did meet with, among others, Senator Wolk, Assembly Member Jim Frazier from Marin, who is a major player in transportation issues and sits on that transportation committee, chairs the transportation committee. And also Senator Mike McGuire from Healdsburg, who has a very, I'll call it interesting, but it's also worrisome bill that he is putting forward. But he did spend 30 minutes with our group, which is, if you've ever visited your legislatures, your legislators, and in session. That's rare to get that much FaceTime. But he has a bill, SB 1102, and the reason it matters to us here in Yountville is because it pertains to short-term rental legislation. There are, you should check out this, this bill and call and let him and your legislator know what you think of it. There are some things that I find very alarming. There are some things that I think we can live with as a community that's really heavily reliant on occupancy tax. So, that's something that's still being written and evaluated and going through committee, but it's something that we need to pay close attention to. One other key, two other key issues, actually. One related to transportation funding and credits or incentives for self-help counties. And it speaks to Napa County's proactive approach by voting in favor of Measure T, so we're gonna have our own road and maintenance and repair tax starting in 2018. That may put us in a more positive position to get additional transportation funding if, if the current legislation moves forward. The last item, and this is a Senator Wolk-authored bill that gives me a bit of concern, but we were able to talk through it. It has to do with our Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, restrictions on their ability to review spheres of influence as it relates to water delivery to disadvantaged, unincorporated, what they call "bubble areas." And so, that's again, something that I'll be keeping close watch on as it works through committee. Sometimes these things take on a completely different content by the time they actually get voted on, so it's always hard to know what to be supportive and what to oppose. Also, Councilmember Jordan will be, I'm sure, thrilled to hear, I'm working as Chair of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority and also here as mayor on putting together an exploratory committee on autonomous vehicles. And there's been some positive response to that idea. There is a bill that's also being presented right now, AB 1592, that is an effort to have the state legislature allow one project in the East Bay, out at Bishop Ranch out in San Ramon, to be permitted to test autonomous vehicles out at the Bishop Ranch Corporate Park. So, I see that, and I say, "Why can't we have a test project here in the Napa Valley?" So, that's what I'm working on. There are some sites that could work similar to that. We just need to either get on board that legislation or get some legislation of our own. There's an issue with restrictions from the DMV that limit the ability to allow autonomous vehicles on public streets and roads because they're driverless, turns out. So, anyway, those are just some items for people's consideration that happening kind of behind the scenes as we continue to do our work. Any other reports and announcements from councilmembers? Annual Yard Sale?
I didn't know if I could toot my own horn.
No?
No. It'll be my last one, just so we're clear.
Fair enough. Yes, Councilmember Doran Becker?
I just wanted to, because I know that we have mums in this, in our staff and mothers and grandmothers who are watching, I want to wish them all a Happy Mother's Day.
You know, when you say "mum" around here, some of us think sparkling wine.
Mothers.
Vice Mayor?
Aren't we meeting again before Mother's Day?
It's this weekend, Vice Mayor.
Is it really?
Yes.
Look, I'm in trouble.
We should have ended this meeting just a couple minutes earlier.
Oopsie.
Hopefully, no one's watching that.
See, quickly, ending any announcements that we made or shouldn't have made. We do have one closed-session item. There is no anticipated reportable action that I'm aware of. Is that correct, Deputy Attorney?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor.
I want to make sure we got to hear from you tonight.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna go into closed session, but we do plan on adjourning with no reportable action. We'll adjourn to our next meeting of Tuesday, May 17th, which is well past Mother's Day.
I will definitely have to make up some time.
And trash day.
Thank you, everyone, and we're...